Good evening. I hate to break up the friendly, friendly chatter. But let's do roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Feis.
Here.
All right, would you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. Would you please join us in the pledge led by Kelly Felkley, City Clerk?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it is now time for the swearing in ceremony. We'll be swearing in a mayor this evening and three council members as well. Madam Clerk.
All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Quentin Hart.
I, Quentin Hart.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all of the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of mayor.
Of the office of mayor.
In the city of Waterloo.
In the city of Waterloo.
Black Hawk County, Iowa.
Black Hawk County, Iowa.
As now or hereafter, provided by law.
As now or hereafter, provided, required by law. Okay, you know, you gotta keep it short phrases, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to call up three council members. Mr. Bozen, Ms. Creighton Smith, and Mr. Simon, would you please join me up front? All right. So would you please raise your right hand? And then I state your name.
I, Mr. Simon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
In the city of Waterloo.
In the city of Waterloo.
Black Hawk County, Iowa.
Black Hawk County, Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations. We have Councilwoman Creighton Smith representing the fourth ward, Councilman Dave Bozen. We gotta change this name tag. It goes to the at-large position and Councilman Steve Simon is at-large as well, so. No, Ward two, I keep getting it wrong. It is changed right here. It says Ward two. Let me sit down while I'm behind. Mr. Mayor. To all of you, congratulations and thank you for your service as well. And before I sat down, I had something else to do. I'd like to call Bridget Wood up to the front. All right, I would like to present Bridget and our finance department. Bridget is our Director of Finance with the Government Finance Officers Association for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented to the city of Waterloo for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022 by Christopher Moore, the Executive Director and CEO of the Government Finance Officers Association. And so, would you like to say a couple things first?
I just thank my finance team for doing an awesome job every year. This is the 19th year that we've received this award. Couldn't do it without them.
And I want to say this is really important. There's a lot of dollars that come through the city by all your contributions, whether it's through property taxes or whether it's through user fees. And it's absolutely important to make sure that those dollars that you have given us the stewardship of, that we are doing what we need to be doing with those dollars. And this recognition for 19 years in a row from our auditors is further proof that we are being great stewards of the many resources we have. So I want to acknowledge Bridget. I want to acknowledge the finance department, the city council as well, who votes on the expenditures we have. And we want to thank the citizens and we hope that you have full confidence in all of our efforts for your valuable dollars. So thank you so much and congratulations.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the agenda as proposed, as well as the approval of minutes of the December 18th, 2023 council regular session as proposed.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Oppose? They have an agenda. It's now time for public comments. This is your opportunity to be able to address the city council on non-agenda related items. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and let us know your thoughts. And just really quickly, do we have family members of the council members and mayors that were just sworn in? Would you please, please stand up so we can acknowledge all of you? I'll tell you, being in an elected capacity and being the family member, you know, your, your family is in that office with you as well. You hear what's said about your spouse or your cousin or your father. And sometimes it, it, it's tough. But the, the work that's being done on the city council level and all their bravery for stepping up to serve is to be commendable. And so I just want to thank you as family members for all of your support and lending them to us for a while is very much appreciated. And Mr. Simon, would you like to introduce anyone? Or Ms. Creighton Smith or Mr. Bozen, would you like to introduce anyone special out?
I've probably done this before, but the individuals that stood up, my partner, my sisters and brothers, my grandbabies, my daughter, my constituents or family as well. I really appreciate you and thank you for your support and for your love and your kindness.
Mr. Bozen.
I'm a little embarrassed because after four years, my family's stopped watching.
Ms. Bozen watches these meetings, though. Mr. Simon.
I'd like to thank my daughter who's here, Addison in the front there, my mother, my wife, Amy, and my brother Jack is here as well. All the, the campaign staff is, is here to watch me come in. They, they put a lot of time in as well, but my family, like you, like you said, Mayor, they, they put up with a lot of stuff on the campaign trail for five months, so I thank them and obviously love them all, so, thank you.
It only gets better. Yeah. And then my lovely wife, Ms. Cassandra Hart is here as well. And my baby girl is right next to her, Ms. Halea, who's trying to look down so daddy won't call on her, but. But, um, all right, all right. Back to business. Oral comments, please.
Mary Potter, 1416 West Fourth Street, a trustee of Grouse Museum. As you know, I want to speak about this every single time we have a council meeting, so tonight is it. And we have two ladies on the council that are both our liaisons, and so they know something about the Grouse. I'm going to talk to you tonight about the planetarium. I'm sure many of you have heard about it. It is one of the nicest parts of the Grouse Museum. It was put there at the time, as you see it today, when it was going into very bad disrepair. There was a lot of work that needed to be done, so it was decided, instead of just trying to do it on their own, they would have a fundraiser. And that fundraiser was highly successful, especially when Barbara Corson left, didn't leave money, but gave money as a donation to help with the restoration of that particular planetarium. And she, I talked to her today and she said she did this partially in memory of her parents, who were the Norrises. And because she had a desire to keep this as one of the finest planetariums we have in Iowa, there are maybe only two or three others. This planetarium, if you have not been to it, you need to go. They had a marvelous Halloween show there in October. And they're going to plan one for a Valentine party in February. And the museum has a young man named Benjamin, and he takes part in putting all these together. He does a marvelous job. And you all need to be supportive of the Grouse because of the fine things that it does bring to Waterloo. The shows that are coming up in the wintertime, these are the shows that happen. Three o'clock PM Tuesday through Friday, Saturday at 11:00 AM, 1:30 PM and 3:00 PM. And then on summer hours, they are different, but since this is not summer, I will just leave you with the winter hours. I think you can find this on any sheet that is handed out by the Grouse Museum. And if you have questions, you can call me or you can go to their website. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Dreyer. And hopefully you're not coming to set a date for me to come help you with those, not yet.
I wouldn't want to date with you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not that kind of guy.
Well, you let me off the hook then, so that's good.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Fourth Street. Driven by a structure that is falling down across from the Salvation Army for quite a while. Do we own this? If not, why is the city allowing this hazard to remain? Why is the city code enforcement, quote, not citing this owner if it is an owner rather than us? I see no barriers to prevent someone from sustaining injury. Would it be, would it not be prudent on the city's behalf to take care of this with some sort of action? It's a hazard.
Is that the one with the, it's not a porch, but it's the.
It's an overhang. It's like a front porch type of, yeah.
Yeah, I actually rolled past that today, so excellent point. I don't know if we own it right off.
That's been there for some time, like weeks, months.
All right, thank you, sir.
Good evening, council. Brian Helmick, 325 East Park Avenue, the fighting fourth. Here tonight, as elected city council members, many of you are elected to represent your constituents and your wards. But when you are elected to city council at large, you are elected to represent all of Waterloo. As elected leaders, you are expected to answer tough questions. You aren't able to run away from them because you deem them unfair or unworthy of comment. Councilman Simon, you were elected to represent all of Waterloo, calling issues affecting our citizens that may not affect you directly as national issues are refusing to condemn racism.
Mr. Helmick, we're not going, there's no personal attacks.
It means the struggle and humanity of all the people you elected to represent.
By the chair right now.
I sure hope you are a better elected official than Kennedy.
You are not recommend, you are not received by the chair right now. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Erica Rissy, a constituent of Waterloo, deeply invested in upholding the values of our community and those that we support, particularly those surrounding human rights. I wish to echo the sentiments expressed by Mr. Hart's powerful proclamation on International Human Rights Day. And I'm just going to pull a few lines to save us all a few time, a bit of time, but if anyone wants to hear it themselves, they can re-watch the latest YouTube livestream. Reads this. "This extraordinary document affirms that every individual born, is born equal with inalienable rights, and it is the responsibility of governments to uphold these rights. Protecting human rights everywhere extends the promise of democracy and bolsters the values that serves as a basis for peace in our world. It is our obligation as free people to stand with the courageous individuals to raise their voices to demand universal rights. We will continue to support all those who champion fundamental principles and we will never stop speaking out for those, for the human rights of all individuals at home and abroad. It is a part of who we are as people and what we stand for as the Cedar Valley United. But I can say that I stand here before you today experiencing a deep disconnection between these noble words and the actions taken by our esteemed council. Since the top of November 2023, I've personally organized over 100 emails regarding the ongoing crisis in occupied Palestine to each and every one of you, except for you, Mr. Simon. And I've only heard back from one of you about the actions that you will take going forward. This lack of engagement and acknowledgement is at odds with our city's dedication to universal human rights. So I implore you as community leaders committed to these principles to consider the implications of not addressing these pressing concerns. Waterloo holds the potential to advocate for peace and justice both locally and globally. I urge you to use your platform to engage with this community and Iowa's political leaders to bring an end to the ongoing crisis and death of innocent Palestinians. Let us align our actions with the values that we uphold. And lastly, responding to constituents' emails isn't a courtesy but a responsibility. And I eagerly await your responses. Again, my name is Erica Rissy, Waterloo constituent. Free Palestine."
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Addison Simon. I live in 1140 Kaplan Drive, Waterloo, Iowa, of course. My father is Steve Simon. I have to just talk about how my life has been changed because of my dad. My father is hopefully one of the best people in my life. And I hope that he is one of the people that will stay one of the best people in my life. I hope that he will, how to go about this? Apologies. I hope that he will talk about the problems that are going on in our community schools that have been becoming a problem between all the students that are in Waterloo council. Waterloo children are being attacked because of current rules and because of current regulations because of the state. I hope that because of this, we can, because of my speaking, we can push past this horrible action of you, of hopefully that can be changed. Sorry, this is hard for me.
No, you're fine.
I hope that this can hopefully push not just, not just the future of Waterloo, but the future of just our city in general. Many students are being attacked, like I said, for what they are identifying as or what they are in general. And I hope that my father or many of you other people on this county, the city council or in the wards will hopefully find a way to fix this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council on non-agenda related items?
Good evening. My name is Beverly Cosby. I reside at 315 Window Court, and I am a member of the Waterloo community. A few months back, I was, I had asked the question in regards to housing development as far as Smokey Row was concerned. And I was told that a lot of the council people didn't know what or where Smokey Row was. However, I have a map. I can tell you the streets that Smokey Row involves. And I can also tell you that there are lots and lots of lots that can be developed for housing. The question, the reason I asked the question in the first place is because over here at Walnut Court, there's been a lot of, of housing built for low income, low income and regular income people. Those same kind of houses can be built on the east side as well as the north side. All we have to do is go across the tracks. Again, I was told that some of you didn't know what Smokey Row was or where Smokey Row existed. But I have a map and I'm willing to show you because some of the streets that are contained in Smokey Row are Manson Street, Hopkins Court, Jackson Street, Oneida Street, Halsted Street, Marion Street, Schillum Avenue, and Partis Sumner. This is where most of the Afro-American black people came in when they were bust, not bust, when they were shipped here or came here on the railroad to break the railroad strike. So what I'm asking is that you all, like you looked at Walnut Court and that area over there and making it historical, why not look at Smokey Row to make it a historical so that we can take advantage of some of the funds and so that we can build up that area and build new housing for people that are qualified?
All right, thank you.
Ali Armon, 223 Southbrook Drive. I actually wasn't going to say anything tonight, but a lot has already happened. And I love Smokey Row, and we should do that. So we didn't, I, I heard a little bit from what Mr. Helmick said, but we didn't hear a lot of it. And I think it probably still needs to be said. This is not about the election. This is about what kind of city we want to be. And if we are going to do the unfinished work in this town of dealing with our legacies of segregation, as the last speaker has just talked to us about, and some of the things that happened in this last runoff campaign and before. Those things don't fall out of the air because the election ends, and I think there is reparative work that needs to be done if we want to move together. I watched nothing reparative be publicly said about a monkey image used to reference and question the credibility of black women leader, even after it was brought to the attention of the campaign on whose page it was posted. We lose nothing by acknowledging, apologizing, moving forward and saying we're not about that kind of thing. We lose a lot when we stay silent. In discussing it online, I was told by the new councilor's close supporters, including Ms. Klein, who was a donor and effectively operated as a surrogate for the campaign, that these ideas about racism, those were just manufactured. The people who were upset about a monkey image used to describe black people were being too sensitive. That everyone in this town has the same opportunities. This kind of ignorance is very dangerous and it erodes the trust needed for the city to move together forward. I also saw in August a campaign flyer which Black Hawk County Sheriff Tony Thompson provided an endorsement for our new counselor because he wanted someone who didn't spend time on, quote, trivial issues and pet projects. Sadly, I'm going to tell you, it was lost on no LGBTQ person I know who saw this, that this was a reference to our community. How do you think this goes for us when we now have to think about whether or not we call law enforcement for help and if it's safe to do so? There's unfinished work when you put that kind of stuff into the air. How does it feel to us to even meet with that representative? At a certain point, a dog whistle becomes a bullhorn. This kind of rhetoric is dehumanizing and it shouldn't be allowed to hang in the air unquestioned. That's why I'm saying it in this mic. And finally, I'm sure we all remember the loss of one of our community members on September 2nd. Mr. Johnson was shot and killed at Fourth and Mulberry. That evening, I witnessed grief from my family members who know his daughter. And in the same moment, I also watched Ms. Klein campaign for the newly elected counselor by posting about the death near the African-American Fest, allowing comments like, just give them a bare knuckles boxing ring to fight it out on, and saying 14 times, get your Steve Simon campaign sign here.
So we, so we're good. So thank you.
Truth and reconciliation is the most local politics there are. It has to be done.
Yes. So, so is there anyone else? Because I have some comments too. Yes, ma'am.
So Tanya Graves, 607 East Donald Street. My concern is housing right around the Cedar Valley, and I noticed deplorable living conditions that have tenants. So how do we address or who do we address when it comes to these houses? Some of them are boarded up with no windows, but people are living in them. So I'm trying to figure out what do we as a, a, a community or the city council, what do we do to address these landlords that are taking advantage of people who have nowhere else to live? I can give you the addresses, but I don't want to, I don't want my house targeted. However, I can meet with each of you or email you, but there are houses that people are living in, living in, and they should be bulldozed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Council?
Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year, everyone. I just wanted to announce to everybody, so I, I am, I love having the conversations that I have with all of you that come visit me at the pharmacy, but I want to continue to make myself more, more available to my constituents. So I've talked with some of the council members that I will be having little rump meetings around the community in different, in different wards, loosely working with the title at-large with Rob. But I will be being available for about an hour. My first meeting will be Tuesday, the fourth Tuesday of this month, which is the fourth Tuesday, the 23rd, and I will be at the. The twenty-third, um and I will be at the um Willie Mae Wright's meeting room at All In Grocers. Uh I booked that room from five thirty to six thirty on Tuesday, uh January twenty-third. Uh come out, I'd love to hear from you. I'd love to have conversation with you. Um maybe we can share a meal um at Grandma's Hand's Kitchen, um but I will be making myself available. Ideally on a monthly basis at this point.
You buy? No, I'm just saying.
I am not buying.
Counsel, any quick comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
In the same vein as uh Councilman Nichols, my ward meetings will be beginning again for the new year, the end of this. Month, the last Saturday at noon in this room. The topic has not been determined thus yet. Um but keep your eyes out. I'll have it on the Facebook page to announce what it'll be specifically on and I'll talk about that more the next council meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just to echo um what Director Graves said, President Graves said. If you want to be a part of the impact or the change that we are working to make in Waterloo, consider joining one of our boards. Um or our commissions, you can do so by applying at the uh City Hall or just go to the City of Waterloo's website. Secondly, I also want to say um encourage your friends and your families now more than ever to start coming to the city council meetings. And to start reaching out to their council members and to start making sure that their voice is being heard no matter what. Even if you have to reach out to all of us, um do what you have to do to get your message out there. And lastly, I do have to say this because I say it anytime it happens. Um New Year's Eve, we lost a giant. Uh we lost Joyce Wilder, who happens to be my great aunt. So if you notice my energy off today, it's because I really feel indifferent about being here. But I always just like to send love and light to the family, my family, um and to my community that. If she made a wedding dress for you, if she made you a meal, if she helps your kids, if she fed you in. Any way, I'm praying for you and I'm I'm sending you love and light and I just ask that you all do the same for my family because we're hurting right now and that's all.
And to your to your point, um you know, don't feel in vain about being here because as you know. Uh her voice made it so a lot of us could be here right now. Um so you know, hold that memory and know that she would want you here this evening and so many of us. And you know, on the on the other point, I would probably say there's probably not. An elected official in the city of Waterloo has been more targeted for various reasons. Uh than I have. Um there's been a, it was a tough election. Um a lot of things that shouldn't have been said were said they were allowed to and unfortunately. Uh elections can get nasty and I know uh first and foremost. Uh so the thing is though, right now. Uh the election is over and all of us. All of us, all of us need to be held accountable for the work that we do once we get here. And so I'm trying to go into this with open arms for everyone on council. And to try to work together to if it was something that happened to change that narrative. You are correct, we have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to make sure that. This is a city that regardless of where you're at in this city, you see some signs of life and opportunity. And that takes people locked in and leaving uh their personal selves away. And focus on the work that needs to be done for everyone in this entire community. And so that's what I'm hoping, that we can come together on the work for this entire uh community, so. I'm going in with an open slate with everyone. And I'm hoping that we can get to the point where we can sit down and we can talk about some of the differences. Um but we have to kind of, we have to work together to move this place forward. Um as as Mrs. Graves mentioned, if you drive around to some parts of our community. It doesn't even look uh like um there's no care or compassion for what people are going through. And then you drive to some other parts of the community, it's more fluent and things are happening, so. It's going to take all of us working together, locked in, to try to correct. Some of the disinvestment that we have seen for years and yeah, we we had a little traction. We're starting to see some things happen, but there's a tremendous amount of work. Uh that needs to be done on behalf of people and if we really want to make uh this a community of opportunity. We have to come together and leave all that politics stuff. Back where it was at and start to start to work and focus on people and that. Is going to be our evaluation point to see if we can stand true to that oath that we all just took. Uh at some point when we are elected, so. I'm going into this with an open slate. I'm gonna work with Mr. Simon. I'm gonna work with Ms. Creighton Smith. I'm gonna work with everybody here. We're going to hold each other accountable, so making sure that we do the right work on behalf of this community and we're not going to agree. Uh on some parts, but when it comes to treating people right and humanely. We need to be able to agree on that because that's what people elected us to do on the local level. We have an opportunity to be able to work together. It's not like you can take. Uh a sabbatical from the work that we have to do. We have to get busy and we have to roll up our sleeves and solve these problems that we have today and so. That's what I'm trying to go into twenty twenty-four with and and leave the other parts of the politics. Um but that is my hope and prayer that we can do uh as a council as well.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to close public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment before we close. Um that yes, we, as I continue to say, we hear what you're saying. Um every comment that's made is part of holding us accountable and is part of us being transparent. And hearing what you bring to the table, so that's very important, even from the pain. Of my sister as she talked about what's happening in Palestine and some of the other. Uh issues, all of those things that you you communicate to us are important and you are heard. And it's important for me to say that um as well. Uh I know what pain feels like, um because it's a life of pain at times. Um but yes, we have to move forward and we have to heal that pain too. We have to repair the brokenness so that we can be stronger together in doing the work that's before us.
Thank you.
Make a motion to close the public comment.
Second.
The motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor, sir, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of uh one A one bills payable. Uh in the amount of five million four hundred forty-eight thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-six cents.
That motion has been made with the second, Madam Clerk. This is uh. Electric electronic vote right now. Please cash your vote for the consent agenda. Alright, and I think that's a yes for you. Alright, that has proved unanimously that the consent agenda is approved and uh we had a. Uh another board appointment for Teresa Culpepper for Human Rights Commission. I don't think that's a new one, though. I thought we just had her. And then uh Bradley Baldwin uh has been um uh hired for the property safety inspector. And Jennifer Coon for the administrative secretary. Either one of you in the audience today? Alright, we thank you so much for joining our team and look forward to working together. Alright, could someone take number one for public hearings?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that it's requested by CNS Car Company to rezone. Approximately point five seven acres from R three multiple residence district to C two slash C Z conditional zoning district and a site plan amendment. For the expansion of an auto sale facility facility located on the southwest side of the South Street from West Sixth Street to West Seventh Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Alright, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this uh rezoning? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I move to close the hearing, receiving file oral and written comments and recommendation of of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I move to receive file and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amending ordinance number five zero seven nine. As amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four approving a request by C N S Car Company to rezone approximately. Point five seven acres from R three multiple residence district to a C two slash C Z conditional zoning district and site plan amendment for the expansion of an auto sale facility. Located on the southwest side of South Street from West Sixth Street to Seventh Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions? Alright, um this is uh an electronic vote. Please cla- cash your votes. Alright, that passed unanimously.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, please cash your votes. Alright, that passed unanimously.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Move to receive file and consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, please cash your votes. Alright, that passed. Thank you. Alright, uh could someone take in resolutions, uh one through three?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to approve the following resolutions. Um motion, a resolution approving request by City of Waterloo. To dedicate a new thirty-foot utility easement on the east property line of Becker Elementary. West of the former Lynn Bud Lane right of way in the R dash three multiple residence district at twelve thirty-nine Sheldon Street. Next is a resolution approving a special warranty deed for revertor revertor of title on behalf of the City of Waterloo. As attorney in fact for Todd J. Borwig and Deborah Borwig pursuant to a development agreement. With Todd J. Borwig for the development of property located at north of thirteen thirty-two Walker Street, originally approved by council on May seventeen twenty twenty-one. And recorded February seventeen twenty twenty-three as document number. Two zero two three dash one one five three two for failure to complete the project per the timeline provided. For in the development agreement and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said deed. And number three, a resolution approving a subordination agreement uh with FDP WTC LLC. In favor of Resource Bank uh N A pertaining to obligations under a mortgage agreement dated August twenty-third twenty nine twenty twenty-three. In favor of the Chandler Group LLC pertaining to obligations under a mortgage agreement dated August. Uh mortgages agreement. Sorry, dated August twenty twenty-three in favor of notes one two three LLC pertaining to obligations under a mortgage. Dated December twenty eighth twenty twenty-three and in favor of State Bank of Cherry pertaining to obligations under a mortgage. Agreement dated November third twenty twenty-three for a project located at two fifty West Field Avenue. And authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Any comments on these three items?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh hold on one second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. Uh with number two. I see that this is a failure to complete the project uh per the timeline. My question is. Uh the old flea market, Kitty Corner from American Legion Post one thirty-eight. Uh are we keeping to give them extensions and extensions and extensions because it's past the timeline for that completed project? And according to what I understand, the individual that purchases for a dollar. Still owns it, hasn't done anything with it, so.
I'm sorry.
Uh and number three, uh do we hold a mortgage on this for number three? For FDP WTC LLC? Are we holding a mortgage? Why are we in the banking business? Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Hey, Mr. Mr. Dreyer, are you, is this a, this a, this person you're saying they own the flea market across the street or?
Well, some years ago, it was sold to uh.
Same people?
An individual. And they had like a five-year commitment to do something there. They've done several other projects in the area.
So you're talking about, you're not talking about, you're talking about the point in which a development agreement is longer, no longer honored?
Correct.
Okay, alright.
He's had plenty of time to get this development done and done nothing with it.
Right, okay, I get it. Alright, um no, for number three, uh the mortgage question.
You would answer two as well?
Sure.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. On number two. Um this individual has indicated he is not moving ahead with the project, which is why we're taking the action tonight. Um in reference to the sixth and commercial street site, the former flea market site. Um that site is part of the flood. Um there was some reassessment of floodplain uh done uh because of the dry run arch in that area. That actually puts a portion of that property in the floodplain. Which keeps the uh developer, Mr. Brent Dahlstrom, from going ahead with workforce housing tax credits from the state of Iowa that he'd like to apply for, so we're working to get the uh. The floodplain removed from that, um so hopefully he'll move ahead, so we haven't taken this action on that site. Because the developer is saying he still wants to move ahead with the project, so that's kind of the difference between the two. Number three, um there were some bonds sold for the development of the Marriott project, which actually was a larger project which created the Marriott Hotel. Fixed the parking lot there, fixed the parking lot in front of the Deer Museum and actually did some work around the Tech One building as well. Um so this is basically just because we had bonds that were sold for that that are being repaid with the development of the project through the Iowa Reinvestment District and through taxes. Um we are in line if things were to go bad. Um the subordination agreement which we've done for other projects is basically putting us last because. The other uh the others are banks that finance the construction of the project and all that and. Um we're we're comfortable with that position, uh keeping the project moving ahead.
So this isn't the only pro- um pro- um project we've done, subordination agreements. We've done them before.
That is correct.
Okay, alright. Mr. Dilavu.
Forrest Dilavu, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. I would like to speak to number two as well. When this went in, this went in against the neighbors' desire. Uh and uh the developer started, tore up, I was over there today. There's a lot of tearing up. There's a lot of debris laying around there. It looks to me like if if we simply let these developers walk after they tear up a piece of property without restoring it. And I understand that uh this walker going on with that Walker Street House. That was a six fifty-seven A house, which was sold to a developer who started development, then stopped. Then I heard there was a loan against that that shouldn't have been there, so that's in court, which also invites. Uh involves some of this that is to the north of that, which is a part of this. Other development. If these developers can just pull out and walk, we need an agreement in there that when they do that, if they just, it's just a change of heart. They need to have a performance bond and pay us back. We bought property for this developer. We let him go in there and tear it up and then he just pulls out and walks. I don't think that's the case in this case, but I think the public needs to know why he's walking. And is he gonna still be on the list to get others or is he gonna be blackballed because he didn't perform? We need to be better with these development agreements.
You mean Mr. The uh Borwig is?
Borwig.
Okay, okay.
That's that's who's listed on this paper tonight.
You you mentioned, I thought you were mentioning something else. I just wanted to know who you were talking about so I can understand clearly.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
I went there and looked today and I encourage the rest of you to go out and look and see what the city's taken back and look at what we're gonna have to do. Sunnyside South was like that and the city spent, I believe, thousands and thousands of dollars to clean up what they left. And nobody knows where that development agreement is either. Thank you.
And I think that was legal fees from being sued that we won in court. Um no, uh with regards to number two, and I don't know, well, is there anyone else that has questions? I'm sorry. Just a question. Is there any action? Is there something that was done to this property that's going to result in us having to pay? More money than we originally would have had to pay? Is there any action that can be taken against a situation like this? Or is that a Marty question?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So. It was a six fifty-seven A. It was a large, uh I think, seven hundred foot deep lot. We split off the front part and did a development agreement. Uh that person uh failed in his development agreement. Um and put a mortgage against the north part as well illegally. We had that taken for care of in the courts. Um then the uh, there was a county sale system where they tried to sell it at uh a tax sale and they tried to sell our portion again, so we're getting that portion removed from it. So there's been some illegal actions placed against a portion of our property, which the attorneys have uh are and are still working to get taken off there for clear title. Um we're very confident in our stance. The property was never theirs to put these against, but they've illegally done it and you have to go through the steps to get it taken off of. In terms of the work that's been out done out there, he's done some tree clearing and things like that. Those are things that would have to be done for the creation of the cul-de-sac to create the the six lots out there anyway, so we don't think there's anything detrimental. Um it's just in a construction stage at this point, which needs. It's just in a construction stage at this point, which needs some attention probably.
And so the portion you, so, so the, 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 the legal portions of the property, is that, was that done by this, the folks here, or was that done on?
That was done by others.
Okay. All right, Mr. Bozen?
Thank you. This has been, I've been frustrated with this whole process since day one. This was a bidding process between a 1,600 block of Logan and this land right here. And I feel that a number of complaints on a regular basis from the, from the people in that neighborhood. And I made it a point to go out there every month to see the progress, which there was none except tearing down the trees. Historical perspective, we owned half of that cul-de-sac, and then someone else owned the other part, and we had to get that settled. But Mr. Borwig went in there without a right-to-entry agreement and just started tearing down trees, you know, property he didn't own. My question to Mr. Anderson, and I emailed him this question earlier, is I want to make sure that the Borwigs are up to date on their property taxes. Because I don't want to vote for this tonight and take possession of this, and there's owed back taxes.
There were no property taxes for this fiscal year, but we're waiting for the assessment for upcoming. So if there are taxes owed against it, we'd probably look to the supervisors to have them abated.
Okay, thank you.
So let me ask you, so, so his previous taxes, though, would they, wouldn't they still have to pay those even if we took over the, or is that all erased once we take over this property?
We could definitely chase him for those. The taxes are always behind, remember? So by the time he took it, he would have just had it for a short time period now, since we're taking it back.
And for a short time thing, how long did they have the property? Was it a year or two, right?
I have to go back and see when it was deeded, but remember, from when we deed it, the taxes are always about a year and a half behind, tracking it.
So before, before, so on number three, number two, what's the time constraint? Because you want to find out if they owe first, right?
Yes, sir.
And then you want that paid?
Yes, sir.
Which?
I'm guessing since they're not willing to deed the land back to us, which is why we're taking this action, I'm guessing they are not going to be easy to work with to get the taxes paid. So we're gonna have to take action, legal action.
And this gives us the ability to be able to do that? Other questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment. It was suggested that somehow we can track individuals that perform this way and prohibit any further interactions with them. I know that the new system that we're getting is going to help us with that. But that's something that maybe we want to discuss further and how to prevent this from happening over and over again. And then how to track those that are, you know, performing this way and have done so in the past.
Yeah, and I think the challenge is, one out of, one out of every 10 of these projects is, it may not work. But I think our ability to be able to accurately track that timeframe is what we, what we really need to make sure we do so that you don't go three and four years past that particular date, that we can have some ongoing communication. So when folks have questions about the status, there's some communication with whoever the developer is for this particular one. This one, you know, of course, is a very sensitive subject for a lot of different reasons. But yeah, if we need to, we need to take them to court with all assuredness. So, but I don't vote. But this will be the beginning process is to be able to do that.
That is correct.
All right.
And one more question, Mr. Mayor. So, so they've had the property since 2021, it looks like, right?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So to make sure I got this correct, so in order to do some more investigative work and to try to recoup the money back taxes, we are to vote this yes? So that gives us, is that what you're suggesting?
That is correct.
And that allows us to look into these items?
Yes.
Yeah, there may be a challenge, though, with the property taxes, all right, and getting those. Like, but this gives us the ability...
I'm assuming he's not gonna cooperate on that, so we'll, we'll look at our, what our options are and move ahead.
I just don't want the council to think like, boom, we're gonna get our property taxes right then. But as far as taking this land back, this is the process that we need to be able to do to regain it. He didn't meet the obligations of the development agreement. And so our relationship with that property is cut, so we need to get that back.
Mayor?
Sir?
If everyone's done.
Mr. Mayor?
Is there, go ahead.
Are there plans on what to do with this if we are to take this back?
We'll be looking for another developer to come in and build the houses.
Do we have anyone in mind or anyone who's expressed interest?
We, we've internally talked to about four different developers, and they're, they're looking at the site.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Bozen? Mr. Wilder?
When this does come back up or when the developers do, could you keep me in the loop on that? Because that is in my ward, and the neighbors over there have been waiting patiently for something to happen over there. So I would like to keep them updated.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Mr. Bozen?
And thank you, sir. And Mr. Chows asked part of the question that I was gonna ask about that too. If we've been showing this to other people, but my question is, is there a timeliness to this? That we have to take this back? That, that we can't work and see where, if, where we're at with property taxes and that? I mean, does this have to be passed tonight?
I mean, the faster we get this done, it allows us to move to the next steps of finding a new developer. I mean, I guess regardless of what the tax number is, we're gonna have to take actions to get them either abated or paid by, by Mr. Borwig. And I'm guessing he's not going to cooperate. That's just my assumption.
Well, you might have found...
No, I'm done, sir.
So I think, I think the getting the property back and getting it back right now out the hands of, out the hands of the Borwigs is our priority.
Okay.
Priority right now. And it reverting back, back to the city of Waterloo is what we need to have. And, you know, so it's a, it's a tough challenge, but probably one out of 10 projects don't necessarily go the way that you want them to. But thank God that we do have a development agreements in place to hold people accountable. But in the future, though, if it reverts back, maybe there needs to be some language in paying the arrears property taxes as well. Because whatever we do, the price has gone up, whether it's tearing down or clearing trees, all those prices and everything that we do has gone up from the timeframe that we have that. So we need to start to recoup some of that. But, yes, you had another...
Mr. Mayor, I was also thinking some sort of penalty too for drawing things out without just cause.
Right. All right. This is a electronic vote. Should we do it? Because there may be some, how do we do that for?
If a council member wishes to vote against this item, when we're doing the electronic vote, just state the item that you're going to vote against. Because once that appears up on the screen, it'll be noted that way for, make it easier for the public to understand. So we've got, most everybody's voted so far.
All right.
Okay, they all passed.
We've already, we've already concluded. Some of the council members have already voted already. They've already voted to move forward. And so it's too late in this discussion. But if you would like to contact one of the council members or contact me with your thoughts, I'd love to hear them.
Well, maybe later on, I'll get with Mr. Anderson.
Okay.
I've got, I just got a couple of questions on it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Sorry about that. That passed unanimously. And Noel, please keep us up to date on the proceedings. Four through six, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Mr. Mayor, I moved the, approved, adopt the following resolutions. Number one, a resolution approving a supplemental agreement. Number five, with Stanley Consultants Incorporated, Des Moines, Iowa, in the amount of $124,600 in conjunction with fiscal year 2022, 11th Street and Park Avenue Bridge Replacements, contract number 1013, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute that document. Number five, a resolution approving an ALS intercept billing agreement between Mayor Clinic Ambulance and Waterloo Fire Rescue and authorizing Bill Beck, Fire Chief, to execute that document. And number six, a resolution approving a professional service agreement with TerraCon Consultants of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in conjunction with the construction, observation, and materials testing for fiscal year 2023 Gates Park Improvement Project, contract number 1076, and authorizing the mayor to execute that document.
That motion has been made with a second. Are there any questions on items four, five, and six? Counsel?
One question.
Sir?
For, for Fire Chief. And I was just curious, now that we've got our five new hires on, and they've been through training and that, where are we at with our, with our long-distance transfers? Are we doing one to three a day like, like the program was supposed to do for us? To help pay, pay for these guys' salary and a new ambulance?
Bill Beck, Fire Chief, yeah, we started our transports yesterday. No holidays for, for us. We did have a successful transport. With our new hires, we have two more that just started training today. We've been hit a little bit with the flu bug that's going around the city. We've had a bit of some staffing issues, but we expect to be fully going on it from here on out. I personally am taking three, three shifts on the ambulance just so I can say I know what they're doing when they go there. Because I, I never got to do transports when I was on the ambulance. I was always just 911.
Thank you, Chief.
And Mr. Beck, what is, what is your staffing numbers right now? What percentage of positions are filled?
We are, for the first time in, in my career as chief, and for over a year, we are at 100%.
All right. Chief Leibow, Jermaine, it is question, what's your staffing level?
We are also at 100%.
All right, are there any other questions? All right, number, okay, please vote electronically. I was gonna have Jamie give an update on the bridges that we're paying for. All right, that passed unanimously.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
And motion been made with second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.